Hug is absent. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Please rise for remarks and the pledge by Councilmember Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the interior of it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. First of all, thank you guys and gals for coming today. Appreciate that. As you know, it is Prostate Cancer Month, and I want to take a moment to emphasize the importance of early detection and regular screenings. Prostate cancer is one of the most common cancers among men, but it is also highly detectable when caught early. Let's encourage the men in our lives to stay proactive about their health. Together, we can make a difference by spreading awareness and supporting those affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
In effervescence, publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here. We look forward to hearing your inputs on our many items today. If you're having difficulty hearing the proceedings, you may approach the DICE here for our building commission representative to receive a hearing and listening device, if you need one. And also, in the back of our room, we have closed captioning. I would also encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least turn them to vibrate. Madam Clerk.
Item six, mayor's veto for a resolution that should the city not receive the SAFER grant to fund 18 additional firefighters in the 2025 budget, that $1.2 million will be appropriated from other sources via communication and opposition to the mayor's veto.
Councilmembers, this item would need five votes to override the mayor's veto. There already was a public hearing. I did want to take an opportunity, though, to call up Trevor Towey, the president of the firefighters' union, to address one item of new information since last week, which is represented by item B.
Yeah, thank you. Trevor Towey, 6005 Grover Street, on the President Omaha Professional Firefighters. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. President. After last week's meeting, I listened to the concerns of the council members, and it all came down to, you know, mainly one issue about whether we should fund the budget at the risk of maybe jeopardizing the SAFER grant, which, quite honestly, we're going to know the results of that SAFER grant in about two weeks. But it's always been my position that, absent receiving that money, that we come up with a plan in the budget to prioritize the need, which I think we've indicated that exists. So I was able to find some documents, one from FEMA themselves that talked about the issue of supplanting. I was also able to provide you with a document, and I hope everybody got an opportunity to see this, but a document issued from IFF in regards to SAFER grant applications. And this is the guidance that I've received all along, and it gave me the position that I could effectively advocate for the need to fund these additional positions and not jeopardize the grant because the supplanting issue was not included in the SAFER grant application after 2019. Supplanting would only become an issue if the city applied for a grant, received the grant, and then didn't hire the firefighters that they intended to hire. That was the intent, from the guidance that I've been given, was the intent of that language. And so I wanted to provide that to all of you, not only in hopes that that would provide some clarification, but also provide some clarification on my advocacy. It was never my intent to jeopardize this grant. In fact, I said last week that I advocated to apply for the grant. I assisted the department in writing the grant, and it would be the last thing I want to do. We need the people. And I'll just say that I'm not a lawyer, so I can't give legal opinions. That's not my expertise. I rely on a lot of people that will provide me that guidance. What I am an expert in is being a firefighter. And having worked as a firefighter for 25 years, I can tell you without a doubt in my mind that we need the extra people, and that's why you've seen me up here every week for the last month. We need the extra people. I'm looking for a backup plan. I appreciate everybody on this council that has reached out to me, listened to me, talked with me, tried to find some alternate ways that we can make this happen because, like I said, my expertise is in firefighter staffing, and that's what I'm going to advocate for every time. So I appreciate that. I hope that answers any questions, and I'll be around for any further questions you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you very much. Trevor, I want to thank you for getting the documents to me. And in fact, if I could, for the record, I know there was communication that's part of the record from the union president, but I would like to, I was able to get a copy. Can I make that part of the record? Would you hand that over to the clerk? Thank you very much. Based upon the FEMA report, and I want to thank Chief Bossman, who also was able to get me the entire grant application, all the instructions, the letter and the memorandum that I just made part of the record from FEMA that specifically does state on page two, under the guidance in 3B, that they did make an exception for supplanting in this grant. And we did not have this information last Tuesday. My entire argument was based upon really what I thought would be irresponsible of us to attempt to supplant the funds and risk the grant. After reviewing these documents, I believe my argument was correct last week, but these documents show that there was an exception that's made. This doesn't happen in most federal grants. Most federal, I mean, in fact, I've never seen a federal grant that has this exception. It's standard, I talked to the sheriff, who does a lot of federal grants, who said, yeah, that's standard, that you can't supplant. And in all honesty, the grant is for $6.8 million. This is just asking for 1.2 next year, so we're not actually even doing a dollar for dollar. I'd also like to say, though, we aren't amending the budget. This is just a resolution. So it's not amending the budget in any way. We passed the budget last week, as is, without this in there. I think this is a resolution that's just making a statement. In the event we can't find the funding, we will attempt to find it in the budget next year, from other sources. And again, because it says from other sources, I will support that. I would not support taking it out of cash reserves. That's irresponsible as well. But I do think our mayor is very good with the budget. She is fiscally responsible. She tries to meet the needs of everyone in our city, but also reduce property taxes. So I do think that we have a mayor that cares. She's very fiscally responsible, and I think she will be able to do this next year if necessary. So I'm very confident that I think all of us are on the same page. We all want the same end result. We all need more firefighters. We need more than 18. We actually, in the next, I would say by '27, we're going to have to have a total of 36 firefighters, especially with the new station being added. So I appreciate all the efforts, and I do think that this was, as much as sometimes I think the media made it look like we were at odds, we were all working towards the same end result, just worried that we might be doing something that would contradict what we wanted to have the end result be. So based upon this new information, I will support the resolution. I would have to say it may be a little premature. We could just wait until after we receive the information on the SAFER grant. Hopefully, this will be unnecessary and moot. And so I do support my colleagues who possibly agree, it doesn't really matter. We can always bring this resolution back. Because we aren't amending the budget, this resolution can be brought back if it doesn't pass today. So I'm confident that in the end, we're all going to get there, and we're going to have additional firefighters for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Trevor, can you come up for a second, please? I wanted to follow up on something from last week.
Trevor Towey, 6005 Grover, President Omaha Firefighters.
Good afternoon, Trevor. Thanks for coming down today and for all the work you've put in, helping educate all of us with good and bad and indifferent, whatever we needed to do to try to get the best information we can, and I think you've been fair in providing that. It was said that you suggested that the city take money from the police department to fund this or to have the money available. Do you want to respond to that? What your position on that is?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So I've been fortunate enough to have, like I said, many conversations with all of you, conversations with the mayor's office and everybody that will listen. But the resolution that's been put forward indicated that, as you know, if we don't get the SAFER money, we're going to look at all sources, all sources of revenue to come up with the money for additional 18 firefighters that we need. My comments in regards to the police department is, listen, they are our public safety partners, right? We work hand in hand in so many different ways. I'm also very aware of the struggles that they've had to completely fill all of their budgeted staffing. So knowing that they're unfortunately 120 members down, knowing that they had a budget of approximately 902 police officers, my comments were based on, I don't know if they'll be able to fill all 902, and had they, and if they do not, maybe that money could be utilized to help their partners in public safety, firefighters, fund 18. Those were my, the context there. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you explaining that because, again, as Councilmember Melton said, we're all trying to get there. I don't think it's he against her, or her against him, or whatever anyone he wants to frame it. I think this is about prioritizing the safety of firefighters and our citizens, and how do we get there? And this resolution that I supported last week that I'm going to support again today is my commitment that I, if we get the SAFER grant, that's terrific, and I applaud the IAFF and your membership, and you in particular, for helping the city. I know maybe in the past, they didn't want to work or accept the help, but I think, in fairness and thanks to the chief, the city now is accepting the help that your subject matter experts can bring to the table to try to get that grant because, as we all know, there's tremendous competition for those, and framing or how you write the grant can impact whether or not you even have a chance to get it. So the reason, again, that I'm supporting this, the city, we didn't apply in '22 for whatever reason. We did in '23 and didn't get it, and my recollection is that they didn't ask for the help of your subject matter experts. The city now, in this budget for '24, they have accepted that help. So hopefully, we get the grants. If we don't, my commitment to the citizens of Omaha and to your members is I will support this because I want to prioritize it now and not have to wait till next year to do it. It's maybe a philosophical difference in respect to the mayor, who does a good job on her budget, but the council can weigh in on what our thoughts on it are, and I shared with you and everybody what mine are on that today. So that's why I am supporting the override in this resolution in hopes that we get that 1.2 million and that we have the firefighters, the 18, that we can staff and make sure your members aren't having anguish from mental health and the number of calls that are being done that are increasing. And as you said, I want people out there listening to understand the commitment of the Omaha Fire Department that regardless of the spirited debate we have on this important issue and topic, taxes for the citizen of Omaha, that your members stationed 34, where you are right up the street from my house, your members will always respond to a 911 call. That is never going to change. And I hear you guys going down Pacific Street often 24/7, so you'll always have my commitment, and I'm looking forward to continued discussion on this, but you'll have my support, at least for the council resolution on this for the override today. Thanks, Trevor. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I too appreciate all the information that's been provided to us by a variety of sources, including Trevor, who's just at the podium for the fire union, actually rank and file firefighters that I've reached out to as well, the mayor's office, the law department, and IAFF directly when I reached out to them. I've also reached out to, directly to FEMA, hoping that I could get a definitive answer or definitive clarification to put this issue to rest. So before I kind of continue on with, I think, what my Plan B is, or A Plan B, I know, and I'm going to ask the law department, because before our meeting, just before our meeting, we got another update from the law department, and I think it's going to illustrate maybe something I'm talking about here in a second. So I'll ask Mr. Coosie to explain his email that went out just before the start of the meeting, and it might actually, in part, refer to Section 3 guidance, paragraph B, that Councilmember Melton just referred to a minute ago. So, Mr. Coosie?
Matt Coosie, Law Department, both the finance department and I think the grant staff have been attempting to make contact with FEMA, a person at FEMA, I believe her name is Ms. Shelton, who is assisting with the grant. And Ms. Shelton provided some guidance that directed the law department to the federal statute. There's a federal statute that creates this grant, authorizes this grant, and says how the grant is to be used. So I went, found the federal statute, which is pretty much the final word on this matter, and under the federal statute, which, if anyone wants to look it up, is 15 U.S.C., Section Under Section C, Limitation on Use of Funds, the federal statute says, "Funds made available under this section to fire departments for salaries and benefits to hire new additional firefighters shall not be used to supplant state or local funds, but shall be used to increase the amount of funds that would, in the absence of federal funds received under this section, be made available from state or local sources." A lot of words, but what the federal statute is requiring is for new additional firefighters, which this grant is requesting, these additional firefighters that everyone is talking about, we cannot use this grant to supplant state or local funds. It does allow us to use those funds to supplement the existing funds. So it's the law department's position that that's kind of the definitive word on this statute. The statute is up to date. The statute is current. I think where some of the confusion might have came in is that supplanting or using these funds to replace other funds can be used to retain firefighters. That seems to be permissible and not prohibited under this, but when it comes to hiring new additional firefighters, supplanting is not allowed. So the law department's position is unchanged from last week, that the levy decrease, also known as item number six from last week's meeting, plus this resolution before the council today that the mayor has vetoed, puts the grant in jeopardy because it implies that we are supplanting the funds. We had the funds. Now we don't have the funds. We're using this grant to supplant those funds, and that's in direct contradicting the federal statute.
Okay, thank you. I did not rehearse this with Mr. Coosie or Mr. Towey, but I think, I think what I alluded to before I called on Mr. Coosie was that we have a lot of information on both sides of the issue, and we don't have a definitive answer, and certainly no clarification from FEMA directly. So in my estimation, it's irresponsible for me to make a final determination without having all that information. So in that light, I will be voting to sustain the mayor's veto, but, and maybe this goes to Mr. Towey's Plan B, because, again, this is not a budget item, and I'm not going to bloviate as to why we're discussing this during the budget process. I'll leave that for other people to debate, but that's irrelevant in my, in my determination of what my action is going to be. But if the veto is not overridden, and I've had these discussions with both the mayor and fire, is that I think there's something that we need to do and have that Plan B. So it doesn't matter if this resolution passes today, or tomorrow, or the next day, but if the veto is sustained, this resolution cannot be reintroduced for a period of 60 days. So prior to this meeting starting, I asked Jim Dowding, or Chief of Staff, to send a request to the law department to put on our agenda, Mr. Rowe and I co-sponsored this, to put on our agenda for the November 19 meeting, which would be 60 days from now, this same resolution. So if it doesn't pass today, or if the veto is sustained, then we will be acting on this in November. Again, it doesn't matter if it passes today or November. It will have the same effect. But in the meantime, I think we would all be very happy if we got that call from FEMA that said we received the CARES grant. So that will be my vote today. But again, it's, I think, demonstrating the support that I think I've been very consistent in my messaging, both to fire and the mayor's office, about what I think we need to do for the next step.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Harding, for that, those comments. I think, based on his comments, you know where I'm coming from. And to me, I think I've mentioned this in the past. It seems like a lot of times, things start off and seem really complicated, and we have issues that, I can tell you, I spent all weekend reading documents and researching online, trying to find answers on supplanting and et cetera. But at the end of the day, it came down to a really simple thing. To me, it's all about timing. If we had brought this resolution the 5th of October, or the 3rd of October, 1st of October, we would know if we had gotten the grant or not, and we could make a decision based on whether or not we got the grant. If we got the grant, it's a moot point. If we didn't get the grant, then we can take action. And that's why I was glad to support coming back in 60 days. If we do not get the grant, we're basically going to be at the same position we are today. We're going to be able to direct our people to find funds to allow us to have a class in July of 2025 that will answer the question that we have and that we all want. I want to be very clear, too, that I am 100% behind our firefighters. I feel like I, I appreciate the relationship I have with Mr. Towey and the open conversations that we can have. And honestly, this is the first time we've probably been on different sides. I mean, every other issue that we've talked about, we've been in 100% agreement. And I don't think this resolution today needs to be as complicated as some are making it. I think we can come back in November, and I'm pretty sure it'll be a 7-0 vote, if that's where, if that comes back in November. Hopefully, as Mr. Harding said, hopefully, we receive a call in the next day or two. FEMA has committed that they will have the funds spoken for by the end of the month, so it's two weeks, or week and a half, and then we'll know. We'll know for sure by the 1st of November if we were successful or not, and then we can take the proper action. My, the last thing that I want to do today is to vote to jeopardize our ability to get the grant. I don't know exactly when they're going to make determinations or how they make determinations at FEMA. I've been on their website, and it seems like they make decisions every day. You can see different communities, Rockford, Illinois, or whoever has gotten the grants, and they have about $300 billion to work with, and it seems like they're just going until they run out. And hopefully, Omaha's on that list, and we are successful in securing $6.8 million of revenue. We could use it. We'll use it well. Fire department needs it. There's nobody up here has any question about that. We need the people. It's just a matter of how can we fund it and what the timing is, in my view. So I don't think my view has changed since last week, and I appreciate that. I just appreciate you hearing my thoughts, and it's not because I don't believe the fire department needs the help. I'm 100% behind all of our first responders and want them to know that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past week, we've done a lot of back and forth conversations via email or phone calls regarding this matter. A lot of work was done into researching and figuring out whether there was merit in not supporting this or supporting this. And at this time, I would like to thank everyone for doing the hard work rather than just simply saying no just to say no, but actually doing the work to investigate, research, and make informed decisions. So I would like to applaud this body for doing that work and being diligent about doing that work. I would also like to thank the fire department and its efforts in providing additional information to us as well. It's only without or with this work that we're able to do our job as city council members effectively. Many people would call that collaborative communication, what we just did. So with all of the information that I have at my fingertips, I still stand with the answer that I provided last week, that I am in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I introduced this measure during the budget process because, in my review of the budget, it identifies getting to 687 firefighters in 2025, but it was clear the only way that was going to happen was through this SAFER grant and adding the 18 through this federal funding we're hoping we do get. And I think we all agree, and the grant application states that it's important to get to 687 in 2025 because of increased call loads and because we want to get a rig or two back into service downtown, and also because we need to do this in preparation for the new Northwest Fire Station in 2026, presumably opening up in the spring. And if you want that to open up in the spring and be staffed in the spring, you better be hiring those firefighters sometime in 2025. And I think it wasn't enough for the firefighters to say, if we don't get the grant, we're just going to work on it, because in 2022, there was a missed deadline. In 2023, we were unsuccessful in getting that grant, and this year, it doesn't sound very promising when more than two-thirds of that money has already been awarded to successful grantees, and we haven't heard anything. So that was the impetus of this resolution, and it does not amend the budget, and it purposely does not amend the budget because in my conversations with the law department, I asked them to draft it in a way that shows our commitment but could not be perceived as supplanting or hurting our chances with that federal grant. And so that point has been lost a little bit in this entire conversation, but that is true, and I'm confident in that case. And although I respect Mr. Coosie greatly, I disagree with his interpretation of what might be considered supplanting in this instance for that reason, but also because applying the logic of the extra tax cut we did last year could put this in that category of supplanting. Well, if that's the case, then the original budget does that because the original budget counts on this federal grant for 18 firefighters and also cuts property tax. So I don't, I don't see the difference, and I don't think either one can be perceived as supplanting, nor do I nor do I think either one puts this application at risk. So I do hope we're successful with that, too. Hopefully, we'll know here shortly. But I continue to support the firefighters, continue to support this contingency plan, and will vote to override the veto. Obviously, when you do something like this, you prefer to have a full council. One of my jobs as president is I'm pretty good at estimating what people are thinking and what those vote counts are. And I think it's pretty prevalent right now, how folks are going to vote from their speeches today. So if this override is not successful, I am still encouraged about this getting done, because we'll have a full council here shortly. And as Mr. Harding and Mr. Rowe have recognized, this can be reintroduced within the next 60 days. And it sounds to me like, if that happens, we'll have a unanimous vote at that time and if we need it. And that means we're talking about hiring these firefighters in 2025, when previously, even just a week ago, the answer from the Mayor's Office was not until 2026. So to me, that would be a good outcome from all these discussions. There are no further lights. Is there a motion to override?
Motion to override.
Motion a second to override? Roll call.
Johnson.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion failed, 3 to 3.
I miss, yes, thank you for the [inaudible].
Yes.
Yes, I misunderstood the motion.
I can't, at this point, we can't reconsider it.
I believe Ms. Johnson intended to vote to override. Is there a mechanism or a procedure by which to correct that today?
Not for the mayor's veto, I'm sorry.
It does not change the outcome, but obviously, we know your intention, and should this resolution be reintroduced in 60 days, I know you would look forward to that, too. Thank you, and thank you all for your testimony and work on this.
Item 7, to consider a Class C liquor license for More Than Dumpling located at 5413 South 72nd Street, Suites 116 and 117.
Public hearing and vote on number 7 is today. Proponents, please.
Charles Doorward, attorney for the More Than Dumplings, Inc. So I am here representing the applicant.
Thank you. Just need your address, too, please.
I'm sorry, 7305 Main Street, Ralston, Nebraska, 68127.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 8, to consider a Class C liquor license for Los Famosos located at 1328 Park Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 8.
Sorry, it's a Class I.
On number 8 today, a Class I. Proponents, please.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Luis Fernandez, owner of Los Famosos, 1328 Park Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Vaguely, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down today. You want to tell us about your new establishment here?
So my establishment is business-owned, sorry, it's family-owned. I've been doing food trucks with my family. We have six years in food truck, and we got a chance to start our own little restaurant and got to go ahead on something beer in the future. We went to add the liquor license, so that way we can bring more clients, more customers. But our environment's more family, so we can decide who to serve and not to serve alcohol. And it's something new for us, so.
Okay. And what are your hours of operation going to be?
My hours are from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00, and from Monday to Saturday. And Sunday, it's from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m.
You said 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yes.
Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. And did you reach out at all to the Neighborhood Association at all?
No.
In the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association?
No, I just did what the Liquor Commission was telling me to do, monitor. It's my first time, so it's something new for me, and I'm going to start learning from new experience, you know, as long as it comes three years.
You're doing great here, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
I wish you the best of luck, and I'm going to support this today, but I would encourage you to reach out to the folks at the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
And be part of that, because it's a great, thriving neighborhood that's growing. And I know they would welcome all businesses, and they would love to hear from you. So I would encourage you to reach out to them, because those are going to be your customers that live in that neighborhood. And you being here today and giving us your story, I wish you the best of luck, and that's a great neighborhood that you're going into.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion, thank you, Mr. President, to support this, and I believe we got to waive rule number 7.
Yes, that's correct. There's a motion and a second. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Yep, good luck.
Item 9, to consider a Class I liquor license for Village Inn located at 2525 South 180th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 9 is today. Proponents, please. Good. Name and address for the record.
Village Inn on 180th and West Center, 2525 South 180th. My name is Sally Anian, and I work for Village Inn.
My name is David Harbin, I work for Village Inn as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items 10 and 11 can be considered together for Banghart Edition located at 9205 North 156th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Councilmembers, John Blumenthal, 1601 Dodge Street, on behalf of Timothy Banghart. And I'm here to answer any questions you have on the replat today.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
May be approval.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Items 12 through 15 can be considered together for Kensington Park located north of 207th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 12 and 13, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 12, 13, 14, and 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hasi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions the council may have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Consent Agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on Agenda items 16 through 18 were held on September 10th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
The public hearings on Agenda items 19 through 33 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, this is items 19 through 33.
Larry Store, 501, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. A little confusion last week, so today, I'm going to say I am opposed to each and every one of these items. Do I get three minutes on every item?
No, you don't.
Mm-hmm. Well, you need to clarify the rule, because you indicated last week that maybe you only got to speak on one item.
If you're opposed to these items, summarize your comments right now.
Here it says, here you're calling us down, but you don't call them by item number. So that's an implication, sir, that we can comment on each and every one of them. Therefore, I'm opposed to all of them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents today? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Public hearings are closed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 34, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for West Point to allow a kennel as a permitted use. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial.
Councilmembers, this item was postponed from our September 10th meeting, and I think the intention is to have another layover today. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Yes, we are working on an amendment. The Law Department is working on an amendment to the mixed-use agreement, which we would like to present to the council. And so I am asking to move to lay this over till October 1st to give us the time and make sure we have a full council for the vote. Motion to layover till October 1st.
I'll second. I don't see any further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0. Item 35, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Siphon Upgrade Project at Thomas Creek and Little Papio.
The public hearing on number 35 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to amend Section 1 and Section 3 of Ordinance Number 43909 to vacate a portion of the Douglas Street right-of-way located east of 73rd Street to the Eastern Terminus.
The public hearing on number 36 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve the Workforce Housing Round 3 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 37 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name's Corey Jensen, 4324 Fort Street. I'm here on behalf of Holy Name Housing Corporation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 37?
Larry Store, 50105 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this. If this is round three, how many houses are we on the hook for now? It needs to be explained as to how this is somehow connected to the Holy Name Church. I looked it up on, oh, yes, the web. At least one name is connected to the church. But that's a lot of money. I can't afford my house anymore because of the taxes. How do all these people get to build houses for next to nothing, or buy the property for next to nothing, build it for next to nothing, and then make a profit from somebody down the road? And those people that get those houses at lower cost, excuse me, they have an unfair advantage to me, I think, because I may have to sell my house to find a cheaper house, which is impossible, because there is no affordable housing in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to accept the bid in the total amount of $668,500 to Dostal's Construction Company, Inc., for the spray ground improvements at Lee Valley Park.
The public hearing on number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Just quick, I just want to make note, this Lee Valley Park was a place where we had one of our city pools. The pool obviously is over 50 years old, couldn't be used. The cost to basically rebuild the pool was, is very, very expensive. And in fact, Mr. Kalsovich, how much would it cost to rebuild a pool?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. The cost of something like that, I don't have necessarily off the top of my head, but it's in the millions of dollar range.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, it was somewhere close to the four to five million dollar range, which it's not in our CP, CIP currently. And so I really, what I appreciate is the Parks Department and myself met with the residents in Lee Valley. I think that would be about a year and a half ago, if memory serves me correctly, Mr. Kalsovich. And I really appreciate our director who kind of presented, we presented all of these facts to the neighborhood. And what Director Kalsovich said is, what I can do is I can find it and I can put it in the budget in 24, in our 24 budget, in order to put a splash, splash pad in there. In addition, there were improvements made to the basketball, basketball hoop. There was also a lot of landscaping and landscaping improvements. And so although this got a little delayed based upon, for various reasons, we were hoping to have gotten this built this year, but because we're accepting this bid, it looks like it will be installed next year and hopefully open, Mr. Kalsovich, by the 1st of May.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, we are, yes, we are targeting the dates that we normally open spray grounds for the season. So yes, you are correct, that is the window of time. And it was, I thought, a very good process to work with the neighborhood. It's always disappointing and frustrating to lose an amenity, but this ended up working out very well and somewhat circumstantially in regards to being located between somewhat geographically other city pools, and then to be able to add a feature that we don't have really serving this area was, we thought, from a department standpoint, a win-win.
Now, and I appreciate that, and the amount of engagement that Parks had with the neighborhood, all the way down to the different designs that the splash pad could have, and giving neighborhood input on what they wanted to see and the design that they wanted to see, I think was greatly appreciated by myself and by all of the neighbors in the neighborhood. So I really want to thank the Parks Department for that level of engagement. And although we're losing a pool, I think just letting it sit there open, not filled with water, the building was just really rundown. This is a big improvement to this tiny little park that most people don't know where it is, kind of buried off Blondo there. And so I really appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to that splash pad come next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 39, an ordinance to grant a permanent right-of-voyage easement and land to OPBD for underground distribution facilities along city property near Eppley Airfield.
Public hearing on number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement from the Burn Discretionary Community Grants Program in the amount of $4 million for the police department.
Public hearing on number forty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
When public hearing can be held for items forty-one and forty-two, ordinance is to approve a public improvement and parking development agreement for parking facilities and an amended and restated redevelopment agreement with KJ Crossroads Venture LLC.
The public hearings on items forty-one and forty-two are today. We've asked for a brief presentation by the applicants, Mayor's Office, Law Department, and Woodbury Corporation. And then we'll go to proponents and opponents.
Thank you. Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office. Wanted to start by just saying the Mayor's Office recognizes all the time and support the council's put into city staff and working with the developer as these agreements were to take shape. So we appreciate your considerations for the parking agreements as well as the amended redevelopment agreement. Myself, along with city legal staff are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, good afternoon. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, seventeen-hundred Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. With me today, I have Jeff Woodbury, who's Vice President of Development for Woodbury, Josh Berger, Director of Development for the Midwest, Walker Kennedy, General Counsel, and Michael Sands with my office. Really, I just want to thank the Mayor's Office and the Law Department and the Finance Department. In particular, this has been a long and detailed process to get to this point with these agreements. I think it's been a very good process. Planning Department's been involved as well. And I think with a project especially of this nature and this size and this importance and this much benefit to the community, to have the private developer and City Hall working together like this is really the way to do this. And I think it's going to bear great fruit for the city of Omaha. So I have the easy part today, at least a little bit for the moment, but I'll be here to answer any questions. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Woodbury, who will tell you a little bit about Woodbury Corporation and some of their history and projects they're working on. And then Josh Berger will tell us a little bit about the development and the parking structures that we're talking about today, and we'll again be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jeff Woodbury. I'm a Vice President of Development and Acquisitions for Woodbury Corporation. I have been for over forty years now, from that standpoint, as I sit back and think about that. Woodbury Corporation's a family-owned, privately-owned company. Our headquarters is in Salt Lake City. We do business in seventeen states, including Nebraska. We have about thirteen hundred.
Just your address for the record, too?
Excuse me?
Just your address for the record, too?
Oh, excuse me. Address, my home address is twenty-two forty South, twenty-three hundred East, Salt Lake City, Utah, eight-four-one-on-nine.
Thank you.
I also have a home here at Farnham Court, Midtown Crossing, Unit forty-five-eleven as well. In any event, Woodbury Corporation is a full-service development company. We are not asset-specific. We have all types of assets in our portfolio, retail office, industrial, hotels, medical, industrial, et cetera. Our company was started in nineteen-nineteen by my grandfather. My father and my uncle took over in the fifties. My generation, I'm in the third generation of that company, took over in the eighties. And we run the company until last year, and we've actually now turned the company over to the next generation. And so I guess I work for my son, who's president of our company. And he's a hard, he's a hard taskmaster, I can tell you that. But any event, I love what I do, and, you know, these types of projects are the projects that I'm used to doing and that I enjoyed doing. Like I said before, we have about thirteen hundred employees. We have approximately two hundred development people on our staff, and we're doing projects in seventeen states. And everything that you can imagine, you know, in a way, now, there's probably something you, you can imagine that we're not doing, but in Hawaii, we have a seventy-five-hundred-acre ranch property that we're dividing into gentleman farms to return land to the local people. We're doing eco-forestation projects, projects in various places. And people would say, well, that's not real estate development, but it is real estate development. And as our company has grown over the years and the interests of the owners of the company have expanded, we've expanded our reach into things just like that. I've been primarily a shopping center and mixed-use developer, and it's probably what I've done most of my, most of my life. And more, most recently, projects like Crossroads have been the types of projects that I have been pursuing and have been doing. We're currently developing a shopping mall in Salt Lake City, redeveloping a shopping mall in Salt Lake City, very similar to Crossroads, where we, it's a mixed-use development that has housing, has retail, has actually some office, even in this day and age where office is a little bit, not the highest thing in the marketplace. And we actually have medical use in that property as well. We like old shopping centers to redevelop because it's usually really great real estate, and it's time for it to be repurposed and turned into other projects. In Nebraska right now, we have two hotels under construction. We have a hotel in Lincoln. We have a hotel in Grand Island under construction. And so those are two projects we have, and we've done, we're going to do a ribbon-cutting with the University of Nebraska-Karney next, or the third, October third, where we've helped them develop a building in their, in their research park. And research park development's been a big part of our, our portfolio and our management as well. I like Nebraska. Nebraska's very similar to, to my home in Salt Lake City. When I, when I say that, the state of Utah. I like the work ethic of the people of Nebraska. I like the, the, the kind of get-it-done type of attitude that exists here. And I see Nebraska as a great place of opportunity, and Woodbury Corporation looks forward to doing more and more in the state, the state, the state of Nebraska for that reason. And so this project's very important to us, and we've worked for the last year trying to, to put all the pieces together, and we feel like we're there with, with this agreement. And this is a project we want to move forward with as quick as possible.
Thank you. Other speakers from the applicant, application team here?
Hi, Josh Berger with Woodbury Corporation, eleven-two-zero-four Davenport Street here in Omaha.
Yeah, just push it up all the way. Push it up a little foot.
A little foot more. Okay. I broke it already. Oh, there we go. All right. So these are just, these are some images that maybe you have seen in the past, but just to reorientate council on what we have envisioned for Crossroads. So what you're seeing here is the entirety of Crossroads. Cass Street is up towards the top of the page. Dodge Street, of course, is on the bottom side, and the Seventy-second on my right. Everything in blue is what we're considered Phase One. It's just about eleven acres of ground, not quite. We've relabeled the blocks A, B, C, D, E, F, really creative, but just to kind of give some orientation on, on what we're planning to build for Phase One. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, and then we can come back with any questions you guys might have. So in Phase One, we really envisioned sort of three big primary uses. We have entertainment use, a retail use, and then a multifamily use. And then, of course, partnership with the city, which has been terrific to work with. We have parking on all three blocks as part of our vision. Again, to create the density that we envisioned that this type of piece of real estate needs, we, we've really tried to consolidate the parking, tuck it away so that it's really about the buildings and the density and the walkability of, of the neighborhood. And then one other big piece that's, the next picture I'm going to show you is, is a view from the inside of Block E. We've labeled the Central Green. We'll probably come up with a better name than this, but this is really the, the heart of the project. So this is public space. It sits above underground parking. We envision escalators that bring you up out of the parking garage right into the shopping area. We intend to have it programmed, professionally programmed. That's one of the things that Woodbury really spends a lot of time thinking about, is you got to, you got to program the space to make it usable and have people want to be there. All the different types of events you can imagine, everything from art and food fairs to football games, basketball games, those sort of things, we intend to happen here. And then a big part of what we've been working on with the city for the past about a year is really the parking. So just to give some context, this is Block B. So this is kind of an exploded view of Block B. This garage sits above ground, so it's two stories of parking. It's a long parking garage, but the nights, the nice part about this, the way it sets into the lot, it's actually not going to be, it's not going to stick up out of the ground on Cass Street. So it will a little bit, but not, it won't be a big, huge garage above grade off of Cass Street. On the south side will be, the first level will be retail, and then residential will sit above the retail on Chicago Street. And then the parking garage, of course, is kind of tucked in behind. And then on Blocks D and E, we have, on Block D, the west side, is an entertainment use that sits above two levels of parking. Think about this like a walkout basement. So you'll enter on the lower level on the, on the west, and then on the south, you'll enter on the second level, and then the, the, the private use will set on grade on the streets, on the street side. And then on Block E, again, we'll have fully underground parking around the whole perimeter of the block. You'll be able to use escalators that'll come up into the Central Green. And really, the intention there is to really kind of hide the parking, make it very walkable. We will have on-street parking, which I think is still important, and Jeff talks about as winning the lottery, so people will probably still drive around and try to get an on-street parking stall. But in the event that that doesn't work, you have really convenient parking throughout the rest of the development. So kind of briefly through that pretty quickly, but happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll get to that in a minute. Ms. Taylor, were you offering remarks? Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I just want to go over briefly with you the agreements that are before the council today for public hearing. As the previous speakers have noted, first and foremost, we have a public improvement and parking development agreement. As I've spoken with each of you about this, this particular agreement, there are about three or four things we're accomplishing here. First and foremost, as you've looked at the site plan that Josh put up, the city will be acquiring from Woodbury the majority of Phase One. That is because the city, for a couple of reasons, the city will be building parking facilities on all three of those blocks and almost the entirety of those three blocks. Two, it does allow the city a little bit of additional participation in the project, which is useful for a number of reasons. And then three, obviously, can help us kind of guide and participate as the project moves forward. As we will acquire these three blocks, we will then also move forward with, in these agreements, securing architects and engineering to make plans for the parking facilities. Eventually, we will come back to council with an actual contract with contractors, with a GNP contract, and a CMAR process, but in the meantime, this will allow us to go forward and start design on these three parking facilities. Probably also most important with this agreement is Woodbury is going to assign to us all of the tax increment financing loan proceeds from Phase One. So as we will acquire the land to build our parking and we will pay for that parking, we will actually then also be taking the tax increment financing proceeds from Phase One and using that to pay for the things that we're doing. So as the project goes forward and gets fully developed, the developer will pay their property taxes, as we all know how TIF works. The developer will pay their property taxes, and those excess ad valorem taxes will actually be then given to the city to repay the city's costs to acquire the land and build the facilities. So that is, you know, a real true public partner, private partnership that we have going on here. And lastly, the agreement obviously obligates some development of Block E, and I think that's a really important part of this project. So what the city was looking for was a commitment and a contractual commitment from Woodbury to install the level of improvements that they have shown us here. So there's an obligation from them to install twenty-seven million dollars of improvements in and around Block E so that we do have that public, has that public space. So as I said, this particular first agreement does those things. It allows the city to acquire the land. It allows the city to commence the development of the parking facilities. It obligates Woodbury to install the public improvements on the Center Green and obligates Woodbury to assign the tax increment financing proceeds in their totality for Phase One to the city to repay our costs. The amendment to, and the restated redevelopment agreement pretty much just changes a little bit of the description of the project. So from our previous agreement to this one, there have been some changes in the programming for the entire site. And obviously, as we approved several months ago amendment to the redevelopment plan, we have increased the amount of overall tax increment financing allocated to the entire project up to just over a hundred million dollars. That's a really quick rundown of what we're doing today, but obviously, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Last and foremost, we'll get here in a minute. We'll take now, if there's any other proponents that want to speak. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five-one-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight-one-three-two. Before I start, I want you people behind me to realize that my comments are not
Larry, you got to speak to us.
To you personally, okay? My comments are to you people.
That's the way it should be.
I just sit here watching your stern faces because, once again, now, we're starting a project all over again. There are other projects that have been stopped also. People like me want answers. Why was this first project stopped for so long? Absolutely no dust raised out there for so long. Not one piece of equipment out there for a long time. It started out that way. There were developers. Something happened. You've never explained it. There's another project down Saddle Creek to Maywood, that's Mayberry, that's been halted also. We'd like answers as to why. Now, all of that time that that property is set vacant, the cost of doing something with it has gone up, hasn't it? Isn't that being passed on to the taxpayer one way or another? I don't care what you call that kind of tax, ad valorem, property tax, excess retail sales tax, ad valorem tax, it gets passed on to the people that shop and live in that area and denied all along. I heard or made reference to the developer pays the property tax, but in a lot of cases, you people like that area, so the property tax value at the time the developer gets it is next to nothing, probably. They pay that for twenty, twenty-five years, fifteen years, and then promise to pay back the loan, whatever it is, through TIF over the next period of time after that time. In the meantime, citizens are paying the bill. Maybe it's bonds, but one way or another, it hits the citizens' billfold. And you delayed this so long that it's costing us more money? You're asking for so much more money here? You need to explain how it does not increase my tax in any way, shape, or form, and why you delayed it and why the cost is probably much higher being passed on additional. And is this happening to other projects? Are we going to have the four corners all stopped because you can't make a good agreement with the developers? Because it won't happen without TIF? Excuse me? Some businesses like to pay for the way they do business. They like to pay the cost of it themselves, but they don't have to in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Seeing none, public hearings closed. Jennifer, I may ask you to come back up. So obviously, I'm a supporter of this project and have been for a long time. I think I've worked on this for fifteen years. And I've appreciated my meetings with the Mayor's Office and with Woodbury Corporation as a new partner in this. I do have confidence in their ability and what they've done other places, and I, I think the new layout, as described today and in these documents, is a better use of the property than was previously being thought about. But having said that, I've been very vocal in my frustration about timelines and also about site maintenance. And I think we're starting to address some of those things now inside this redevelopment agreement, which I think is positive. So I just want to engage you a little bit further on those, on those items. So I just want to engage you a little bit further on those, on those items. So we're talking about an $862 million redevelopment of one of the most prominent locations in the city. And so that's a, that's a major undertaking. So I understand why we're talking about a phased approach, and I think that's always been the idea, even with previous announcements on this property, that it's going to take some time to work on something this complex. What we're talking about here today is what we're now describing as Phase One. So that was Blocks B, D, and E, as described in, by Josh in the visuals there, which essentially are new apartments along Cass Streets, the newer, new-to-market entertainment facility on the western portion of the property, and the new public space and park and activity center in the middle of the property, and the parking garages that would be constructed first. And when we talk about timelines, what we're committing to, I think, in these documents is this partnership between the city and Woodbury. But it gives the city a much greater stake in how this moves forward by being an owner of some property in this partnership with the developer. And so as you've described it, the city would actually acquire those lots and initiate construction on those parking garages. And it also requires the developer, at the same time, to be investing their private funds, $27 million, is what it talks about for that first block. So I wanted to give you a chance to talk about that a little further, then also how that financing works. So this is not costing taxpayers any additional funds that wasn't already part of the infrastructure development here. It's the commitment by the developer to return TIF proceeds to the city for this purpose, right?
Correct. Okay, so there was a lot there. So we'll, we'll try with, first of all, acquiring the land. And I think as we went through this process with the developer and the mayor's office, the idea behind the city acquiring the land is, one, we will absolutely have to acquire the land because we are building garage facilities on all three blocks. So we need to own the land in order to construct those facilities. Secondly, it does, and you're correct, councilman, it allows us, you know, kind of a greater stake in the project and what I've been saying is kind of a bigger seat at the table. Obviously, the property can't be, you know, transferred or otherwise developed without our permission because we are the owner. And then as the owner, once we own the property, we will actually ground lease it back to Woodbury in order for them to undertake construction on our behalf. But in that place, we will be actually their landlord. So we will have all of the rights and duties that we have as a landlord. So in, in effect, if the property is not being maintained to the standards that we've put into that ground lease, I send a notice, they're in default, and they have an obligation to remedy that default or, you know, we have other options underneath the agreement. So we now have a legal ability that we did not previously have to ensure that that maintenance is undertaken. So those are the two things that, you know, one, the obligation that we need to own the ground in order to build the garages, but also the fact that it allows us to participate in a true public-private way in this project and gives us the ownership rights that a landlord has. All of those are benefits to us owning the property. The city will then own the property, and as the project is built out, as those ad valorem tax revenues, excess ad valorem tax revenues are generated, those revenues will be used by the city to repay the bond issuances that we will make in order to purchase the land. So in end of October, early November, there will be bond ordinances and resolutions being presented to you. That will be how we will finance the purchase of this land. But then it is intended to have those bond issuances, the debt service on those issuances will be repaid with the excess ad valorem TIF revenues that come from the development.
Yes. And then as to accountability with the timeline, as the property owner and partner with the developer in this development, we now have greater control as well in terms of initiating construction, and that intention would be spring of 2025 with first phase, first phase completion in 2027.
Correct. And that's another good point. Thank you for reminding me. Also, as owner, because we are building these garages, we will, as I noted, start architectural engineering and design work immediately upon approval of this agreement and as we move forward. Once that is done, we will actually then RFP the project, so we will bid it out and bid it out for a contractor to operate and build the garages under a CMAR process. And because we are the actual owner and contractor, we will be able to encourage or commence that construction kind of on our timeline. So our garages will come out of the ground, obviously, probably next spring because there are facilities, we're building them, we own the land, we'll have the contracts, that is our design schedule. And as Josh will probably note as well, especially with Block E, they can't do anything on, on Block E until we've built the garage that's underground. Same with Block D in particular, too. So those two garage facilities will be the first things to come out of the ground, and those should come out of the ground next year.
That would be a welcome sight for me and definitely for surrounding neighbors, too, who have started to doubt whether this is moving forward or not. And to the overall site, which is still much larger, this document contemplates a year 2032 when it all must be built out. Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
We do have some general timelines for the full build-out of Phase One and for the rest of the project. I anticipate that those will probably accelerate and change as, as we move forward. I think with the start of Phase One, and Josh could probably speak to this a little bit better than I can, but Block A, and I think these front blocks can come along as well. But yes, there are some timelines, the fact that this has to be done, I think, by 2030 or 2032.
And should that not be the case, or should something change?
Again, we're the property owner.
Yes.
So if, if they don't fulfill their obligations to do the construction, that we will own the property.
And there are clawback provisions as well.
Correct.
I think we learned that lesson at a different property downtown.
Yes.
Many years ago. Okay. Josh, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just point out, so just from a sequencing standpoint, Jennifer's right, D and E will go first. And then actually, on Block B, we'll start the residential part first, it's because it takes longer to build. So we'll go first on Block B from a private versus public investment, and then Block B garage will start about 12 months after that. So, but we intend, with Block D and E, those are sort of hand in glove in terms of buildings. So we'll start design together with the city on the garage and the, the retail pieces that are on top of the buildings.
Let me just, I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
The first phase is being done on the center of the project. We're leaving the, the best property, the property along Dodge, and the property on the corners in place to be done later because we feel like the center part will increase the value and increase the demand of, of those outside properties. And so the intent is purposeful of how we've approached this in this phase, to leave the most valuable pieces to later in the project. And nearly every tenant we talked to says, well, I want to be right on Dodge Street. But we, we say, no, this is what's available now. Now, price means everything, and obviously, if we can get more value out of that, that's more property taxes, it's more revenue for this, for the city. But we think you have, have to do the heart of the project first and then, and then tackle the low-hanging fruit because very, very often, people approach it the other way around, and we purposely try to, to save that opportunity for later.
Okay, thank you for that. And I know from our conversations, you don't actually own the property yet, but should this be approved, that then moves forward? And I believe you feel like at that time or in coming months, you'd be able to discuss some tenants and new-to-market situations you're discussing right now.
As part of our purchase and sale agreement, we take over the management of the property. And it's kind of logical, if you think about it, because we're the ones trying to lease it and, and attract tenants to the property. We have the incentive to make sure that the property, I can't say spick and span, but that it's really being taken care of so that the neighbors don't have to worry about dust and weeds and, and those types of things in the future and how there's going to be those moments when, because you're going to be under construction where it's not going to be perfect. But, but our intent is to keep it as clean as possible because literally, we are bringing people to the site for leasing and everything, thing on a regular basis. And what will happen on this is, I think, construction will happen fairly quickly on this, even on the other blocks. So hopefully, you'll see us a lot and you'll get tired of us in, in the future.
And if approved next week, you feel you can announce some committed tenants, would you say, in the next month or two?
I have one for sure that I can announce.
Yeah.
Next week, which I think is a big deal. But obviously, I don't want to announce anything until I can tell them for sure, okay, we got it.
Yes.
You know, that there, that's the big contingency that's sitting out, out there.
Yeah.
But I think there are, we have a list of other prospects, and we're very confident about the project.
And then one more, one follow-up on the maintenance, too. So that, that is a big deal. At times this summer, it was not okay, and I definitely let people know it was not okay. And there were some corrective actions taken at that time, and there was a submittal on, to me, on the maintenance plan for the area in terms of mowing and weeds and litter and, and the fencing we were discussing. But as Ms. Taylor pointed out, if this is approved, the city, then as a, as a property owner, will have that responsibility. And in our discussion this morning, I believe you said you would intend to inquire, acquire the rest of the property, too, and take on that responsibility. Is that an accurate description?
Yeah, we, we're acquiring it on a block-by-block basis, but we'll take on the responsibility of managing all of the vacant property as a property manager, a part of our purchase agreement. So, you know, this is something that, that is logical for us to be the one responsible for it because we're the ones out there creating the mess now. And so we need to make sure that we keep it, keep it, you know, there. And I'm not saying we'll avoid all complaints, but we will certainly strive to avoid complaints.
It's much improved at the moment. I think it was ceded and the fencing was corrected and the mowing was improved, but I want to make sure we have that discussion to make sure that's not the same issue going forward. And I would encourage also a wrap around the fence, much like the library across the street has done, that looks very professional and I think addresses some of these issues and addresses the dust issues, too, that I, I hear a lot about from surrounding neighbors.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you do. I, I, you know, again, construction, there'll still be dust. I don't want you to say that it's not going to be eliminated, but it's, you're right, that by putting a wrap on the fence, it promotes the project, it's advertising, it's important, but it also does reduce the dust.
Good. Great, thank you. I see there are some other lights on for now, so I'll yield the floor at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to commend you on the work you've done to get the team of Woodbury before us so we can ask them the questions. I know this project has predated several of us on the council. And in speaking of Josh, if you've got a second, come up, Josh. Good afternoon. We've had Pete set up meetings at, Council President Fesserson set up meetings that you came to, and you showed the plans that are before us here today. And it, as some people know, my district is on the south side of Dodge, so Pete says where the crossroads in this, this project to the reboot is. But it was kind of interesting, I got an email from a constituent about two weeks ago, right after we met with you, and he and his wife were driving by and he said, hey, councilman, what's going on at the crossroads? Is this thing going to sit dormant forever? And I, I emailed him back, and to his surprise, they said, you know, we've had meetings and they're looking to get going in the spring. And talk a little bit about the money that's been invested of what a lot of people don't see, what I know, is an employee of the Omaha Public Power District. How much money has been spent on the infrastructure so far that we don't see cranes in the air, but the work that's already been done? Can you speak to that?
Well, I can speak loosely to that. So the land, the, the land owner, the seller, has put in approximately $35 million worth of infrastructure from demo to, you know, wet and dry utilities. And they've done a terrific job. And the reason why we're as far along as we are today is because of that, that pre-work that all has to happen. So, you know, KJ, the Creachys and Lockwood have done an excellent job getting the Crossroads District to where it's at today. And then we're sort of stepping in and taking over the vertical development. But all the roadwork has been done, the wet utilities, the dry utilities, all the off-sites, Dodge Street, Cass Street, all of that work has been done. And we would be a full calendar year at least, or probably more off, if we were starting from, you know, ground, from, from an infrastructure standpoint. So we can go fast now because of that work that's happened.
Thanks for at least touching on that because I think that's important, that people, and oddly enough, this guy's retired from OPBD where I worked.
Sure.
So when I kind of touched base with him on the things that have been done, at least people that have driven that intersection for the last multiple months, even going back a couple of years, they understand what you're speaking to on that. So the infrastructure that's all kind of forgotten about is there. So now, when you get rolling in the spring, at least, like you said, we're already kind of ahead of the game. I know this has been sitting out there forever, but as far as your group, that's why I got confidence in you guys.
Yeah.
That this thing is going to be going in the spring with the garages and it'll be in the phases you're doing. But I, I do feel comfortable, and again, thanks to Council President Fesserson for setting up those meetings so we can get comfortable because we're getting asked, I certainly was.
You bet.
And there's a lot going on, as you know, there's a library of 158 million, I think, across the street that's a nice project and a lot of good things. So thanks again for bringing your team and Mr. Woodbury for coming down, and welcome to Omaha. This has been a long, long-going project that we're hopeful that this thing does get rolling, and I'm confident that it will. So thanks for coming down today.
You bet.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Actually, I think all my questions have been asked and more than sufficiently answered by, by the development team, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any further lights. We appreciate your testimony for being here and for showing those visuals.
Thank you.
Yep.
Non-action items, items 43 through 84 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Council members, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:25.